It looks like the only people here are myself, our soup and you and Cara. Everybody else has decided to stay at home. Oh, wait, there go Gary.
Soup and you and Cara. Everybody else is deciding.
So.
There they go.
Chair to pass, I think we are, I think we are all here and ready whenever you, you are.
Okay, let's get going then. Good, good afternoon, everyone. Good evening. This board meeting of the Board of Education for July 12, 2022 is called.
Michelle, we actually can't hear you yet. Terry's working on, so just keep talking. Terry is working on getting us up and running.
Thank you, but I'm talking, but if nobody can hear me.
We can hear you now, so perfect.
Okay, thank you for the update. This board meeting of the Board of Education for July 12, 2022 is called to order. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on has been posted on the PPS website under the Board and Meetings tabs. This meeting is being streamed live on PPS TV services website and on Channel 28 and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the district website for replay times. Good evening and welcome to our first board meeting of the 2022-23 school year. Tonight, Director Green and I are joining from Denver, where we've been attending a school board partners' summer meeting and convening, joining two cohorts, Cohort Three, that I'm involved in Cohort Four, that Director Green is involved in. Superintendent Guerrero is also joining remotely as, and other school, and as he and other school and district leaders attend the California Association of Black School Educators Summer Institute. Tonight's meeting has a brief agenda, with the board voting on new leadership and voting to approve policy revisions and restrictions. Before we get started, and I can't see the audience, so I hope this isn't redundant, but we ask that members of the public attending this meeting tonight, please treat each other, staff in the board, with respect and do not interfere with the ability of the board to conduct its business. So we're going to go to an exciting topic here, the board leadership vote. Board Policy 1.20.010P provides that the board shall elect one of its members as the board chair and one of its members is the board vice chair at the first regular meetings in July and January. As, as it is our process for board members to be considered for leadership position, board members and members-elect must notify the current board chair in writing of their intent but to run, to run by June 1st, if they'd like to declare their intent to run for a board leadership position in July. At the June 14th meeting, Vice Chair Scott declared his interest in the position of board chair and Director Hollins, his interest in the position of the board vice chair. We will begin with the election of the board chair. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 6541, election of Vice Chair Scott as board chairperson?
I move, make that motion, that Director Scott be the next board chair.
Second.
Was that Brim Edwards moved and Director Lowry seconded?
Correct.
Excellent. So Director Brim Edwards moves, Director Lowry seconds the adoption of Resolution 6541. Is there any board discussion?
Just to thank Director Scott for stepping up for the role for the next year, for the next six months, I guess technically.
And I can say it's, it's been a real pleasure to serve together in, in multiple ways. I'll go on about that later, but right now we'll go ahead and take the vote to adopt Resolution 6, oops, 6541, election of Vice Chair Scott as board chairperson. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 6541 is approved by a vote of, I think, seven to zero with student Representative McMahon voting?
Yes.
It's actually six to zero.
Six to zero.
Director Constance not here.
I appreciate that. I can barely see who's in the room. I see Student Representative McMahon. I see Director Hollins, Director Brim Edwards. Okay, six to zero. Thank you for clarifying. So Resolution 6541 is approved by a vote of six to zero with Student Representative McMahon unofficially voting yes. Before we move on, would you like to see a few words, Vice Chair Scott? Chair-elect Scott?
No, thanks, Chair to pass, and then thanks to my colleagues. Yeah, I'm looking forward to continuing the work that, that we've been working on this year, Chair to pass, and, and the work of the district moving forward. So, thanks.
Do I have a motion and a second to, before we go on, I just want to, Director Scott, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. It's been an incredible learning experience and journey working together with you. I've been made, or I've, I've really sort of leaned into learning about like how race and class intersect with leadership positions, and if anybody's interested in hearing more, I'm happy to share. I, I feel like we were a really good team. I appreciate the respect you showed me in ways that I haven't felt in professional settings. I appreciate the, the counterbalance you brought to my, you know, my ideas and my thoughts, and I appreciate your thought partnership and just your willingness to like, get into it and like, I've never had a nicer argument with somebody like back and forth and I'm really excited to support your leadership this year and really grateful that you stepped up to do this.
Thank you. That's very nice.
Now, do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 6542, election of Director Gary Hollins as board vice chairperson?
I'd like to make the motion.
I'll second that.
Director Green moves, Director Brim Edwards seconds the adoption of Resolution 6542. Is there any board discussion?
I just want to point out that people were super eager to move and second that right there. Everybody had their hands on their buttons.
Like a game show.
I think that just says the enthusiasm people have for your leadership style, Gary, and I think that you and Andrew are going to be a really excellent team. And I'm excited to see how, how you continue us on the, I think, my time on the board, each chair and vice chair has sort of moved us forward. And so I'm looking forward to the direction that you and Andrew take us next.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for Director Lowry, because I think, I think all of us are, are very excited about this partnership and where we can go this year. And Director Hollins, I really appreciate you stepping up. You'll have a whole different perspective at this time next year to share with us. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
So the board will now vote on Resolution 6542, election of Director Gary Hollins as board vice chairperson. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 6542 is gleefully approved by a vote of six to zero with student representative voting?
Yes.
Great. And Director Hollins, did you want to say a few words?
No.
These are going to be short meetings going forward.
I think we're getting a flavor, and that's not a bad thing. And actually, Director Green and I have learned from school board members around the country about the length of their meetings and how they address some of the things that, that need to be addressed before the meeting even starts. So chopping minutes and hours off meeting times so they can focus on student outcomes. So looking forward to your leadership, Director Hollins. I'm really excited to support you as well. Congratulations to Vice Chair Scott and Director Harlan, Hollins. Our protocols state that the transition to a new board chair will happen after the board meeting tonight. After, after the board meeting when elections take place and after it's adjourned tonight, we'll pass the gavel at the end of the meeting. Your next meeting will be in two weeks and will, you'll start fresh on the, I believe, on the 28th.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Sorry, I thought you were finished.
Oh, I just, I just wanted to say I look forward to your partnership and your, your leadership, and I know you'll make a great team.
Madam Chair, I, just before we moved off of this agenda item, I wanted to thank you for your work this last year. You know, it, I think we saw a little bit of everything this last year and things that we'd never seen before at PPS. And I, I know when we had this discussion last year before you were elected about how we elevate and support everybody being leaders on the board, that you had some ideas about how to have more inclusive leadership that allowed, allowed for other leadership styles to flourish and also to bring in other members of our, our community into the, into, into our work. So I just want to say thank you for showing us that we can, we can do our work in different ways and that we can show our community that we can work in different ways. So much appreciation. I know being chair is a huge time commitment and thank you very much and thank you, Director Scott, as well, but you're, you're, you're not leaving, so you're, so we can say that for later, but I did want to take a moment and just recognize your, your, your leadership and for what you helped us move forward this last year.
Thank you. I mean, I, I went into it with a lot of trepidation and also knowing that I'm not like a George Washington leader. You know, I'm not a white male. I'm interested in interrupting white supremacy and, and that's what we're talking about here and using that term. Would have us think that, you know, in order to be a great leader, you need to be an extrovert, you need to be a white male. And I absolutely do not subscribe to that, prescribe to that. I, I am a quieter person and yet and, and have been very challenged in the moment and also very doing some reflection in the last couple of weeks about what I didn't do and was reminded over the last couple of days that the most important things we can do as, as school board members is to interrupt white supremacy and interrupt those systems of oppression that keep the achievement gaps where they are. And so that's my focus is, is interrupting those systems that keep the achievement gap in place. And to do so requires different thinking, different voices, different approaches, different cultural backgrounds, different ways of problem solving and, and ways that we don't even know how to problem solve if we're steeped in this culture of white supremacy. And so I appreciate the grace that you've all shown in doing this kind of uncomfortable work together. It is uncomfortable, but it's uncomfortable because it's new and I just, I again, appreciate your grace. I know that for probably most of you, I wasn't the leader that you, you know, in your mind, consider the leader of the school board and in my mind, absolutely, I absolutely was. So, but with, with, with warts and all and all of the things that I, that I didn't do that I've reflected on as well and the ways I didn't show up. So I appreciate you. I'm really happy to pass the baton, pass the gavel rather.
Well, you've actually, I was going to say some things and you just said it three times as good as I would have, so.
Why not?
No, and thank you. I, I second everything that Director Brim Edwards said and, and actually how you just described. I, I learned so much from you this last year and just really appreciated serving as vice chair and, and having these conversations and occasional arguments, but again, they didn't feel like arguments. They felt like really good, you know, discussions and, and, and you really just, just embodied, you know, what, what we learn and what we talk about, but doesn't always come to reality or fruition, which is that if you ask the question, it changes the conversation. And what you did every single time was ask the question. And you said, how, how is this going to affect our students of color? How is this going to affect our racial equity, you know, focus? How is this going to have an impact on the community? And, and I think that was very, very powerful. And it was powerful for, for, for me, it was powerful for us as a board and, and most importantly, for our community and our families. So thank you for your leadership over this last year. And you're not going anywhere. You're still on this board. And so really excited to continue working with you. Thanks to you.
Yeah, and it was really nice to work with someone that had like already had so much professional development in this area that I, we never had to kind of go backwards. Our disagreements were not backwards, not going back to, you know, the beginning, but really, I think we're, we're in the moment and we're emergent and, and we're like a great way to disagree. Just, I love the way that we disagree. So let's continue that. We're going to move on. We're going to try to keep it brief, but thank you for that, Director Scott. It's, that's meaningful. And Director Brim Edwards as well. Thank you for that. We're going to move to the consent, consent agenda now. We're now going to vote on the consent agenda. Board members, if there are any items you'd like to pull for discussion, we'll set those aside for discussion at the end of our meeting. Ms. Bradshaw, are there any changes to the consent agenda?
No.
Madam Chair, I'd like to just separate out Resolution 6546 for a separate vote, not at an extensive discussion.
6546. Authorization, authorization for off-campus activities. Okay.
I don't think it needs to go to the end of the meeting because it's not going to be a long discussion, but I just would like to have a separate vote.
Was it, is it just a comment or?
And the vote.
And the vote. Okay, so we've, so are we then pulling Resolution number 6546?
Yes.
For discussion?
The vote on the consent agenda will exclude Resolution 6546.
Okay, so do I have a motion and a second to adopt the change, the consent agenda except for Resolution 6546?
So moved.
Second.
Great. Director Scott moves and Director Hollins seconds the adoption of the consent agenda minus Resolution 6546. Is there any board discussion on the consent agenda? And Director Brim Edwards, I guess this would be your moment.
Actually, Chair to pass, that will be a separate vote and separate discussion. So I think you're referring to the resolution that was polled, not the remaining resolution.
Correct. Okay, so that's a separate vote aside from the consent agenda. Okay, thank you for the clarification. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
Okay, the board will now vote on Resolutions 6543 through 6550 minus Resolution 6546. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? The consent agenda is approved by a vote of six to zero with Student Representative McMahon voting?
Yes.
And that's the consent agenda minus Resolution 6546. Shall we now circle back in terms of process to Resolution 6546? That's the resolution to approve, I'm sorry, to authorize off-campus activities?
Yes, I think that makes sense to do that now.
Okay. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 6546 authorization? I'm sorry, Resolution to authorize off-campus activities?
So move.
Second.
Is there any board discussion on the adoption of Resolution 6546?
I'm going to be in abstention and it's not because I'm not supportive of the trip. I just, there's some additional information that I'm looking for.
Okay, so you'll, well, you're going to just abstain from the vote altogether. Okay. And is, so there's no public comment because that was wrapped up in the original consent suite of resolutions. So we have a motion, Director Hollins, and a second, Director Lowry, to adopt Resolution 6546. Authorization, sorry, I keep getting the title wrong. The resolution to authorize off-campus activities. All those in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All those opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any, and there is an abstention, that would be Director Brim Edwards. The consent agenda then is approved by a vote of five to zero with Student Representative McMahon voting?
Yes.
And one abstention. We're now going to hear comments. I believe on our agenda, we've got the Portland Association of Teachers going first. We'd like to flip that and have some representatives from the Service Employees International Union go first. I've, I've asked them both, or let them, let, let both sides know that they're welcome to go in any order and so we'll start with SEIU.
Excuse me. First want to thank Chair to pass for making time to let us speak. I appreciate your support tonight and always. I know you're one of our allies. My name is Veronica Green and I am the lunch lady at Creative Science School. And I'm also a PPS parent. My son Julian will start Franklin in the fall and Valentina is going to be a fifth grader at Glencoe. As you know, COVID leave protections are, that are outlined in the memorandum of agreement between PPS union employees and PPS expired on June 30th. We strongly urge you to extend the MOA, allowing PPS staff to use quarantine leave for COVID-19 isolation. So far, human resources have not agreed to extend this common sense health and safety policy, which is why we are asking you now to help us keep our community safe. Ensuring the health and safety of our staff and students is more important than PPS choosing to save money. Staff should never be in the position where they are required to come to work with COVID-19 in order to earn a living. We also need to make the health and safety of our students the number one priority. PPS students deserve to be in an environment where they can thrive and learn and be healthy. Last year, I used all of my sick time and leave to stay home with my kids to support them in distance learning. When I returned to work in the fall of 2021, things were going great until December, when I fell at Mount Tabor Middle School while picking something up from the office for my son and I broke my leg. Don't recommend falling in front of middle schoolers because they're all getting out of class. Anyway, I was out for months, so once again, I do not have any sick time available. In fact, when I checked yesterday, I'm actually negative eight hours of sick leave. I didn't even know that was a thing, but I, yeah. Let's see. What would I do if I were to test positive for COVID like so many of my coworkers have recently? I would be freaking out is what I would do. This would be devastating for my family. I'm fully vaccinated, extremely careful, and I'm masking up again. But I did get breakthrough COVID once and it's not crazy to think that I could get it again. I am a lunch lady and my husband is a United States postal carrier. Our jobs are critical to our community and I want to feel like my employer values me and my family for the important jobs we do and who we are all the time, but especially during a global pandemic. COVID-19 continues to spread in our communities at an alarming rate. Extending these agreements is a simple way to prevent new exposures and keep our schools safe for our staff and students. Will you do the right thing and make sure your workers get quarantine pay and don't have to risk exposing the community to a dangerous fire, dangerous virus? It's really a no-brainer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Did we have any other speakers from SEIU? We'll move on now to comments from the Portland Association of Teachers. Our agreement with the Portland Association of Teachers allows them time on the board agenda at their request. Thank you, President Bonilla, for being here virtually this evening and we're anxious to hear your thoughts.
Hello, thank you for having me. I am now officially the president, so that's pretty exciting. Hello.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Well, I thank you for having me, Board Directors and PPS staff and Superintendent Guerrero. I'm speaking also in support of extending the MOA, allowing PPS staff to use quarantine leave for COVID-19 isolation. As my union sibling Veronica shared, quarantine leave is crucial to the health and livelihood of our PPS employees in a world where we know COVID infection and reinfection is a reality. And I understand the concerns around money. It will cost the district in order to pay for that time off for workers. But I want to make sure that I posit that, you know, our community's health is worth it. COVID-19 continued to spread in our communities at this alarming rate and we know who is most impacted by this virus. It's our low-income families, our families of color and the elders in our communities. And so when I mention these groups, I don't just mean our students, I also mean our staff. You know, we've struggled to hire staff and substitutes. And one way to entice substitute workers, especially our elders in our community who are seasoned and retired educators is to ensure that they will be coming into an environment where they will be less likely to catch COVID and bring it home. With masking no longer mandatory, dissisting is no longer mandatory. You know, asking folks to stay home when they are sick is really one of our last lines of defense. And we want folks to do what's best for them as well as their community, and that's to stay home when you're sick. But we also know it's not a fair choice to ask staff to choose between paying their bills and possibly infecting their community, especially knowing that COVID isn't always a knock you on your bottom, you're knocked out for the whole week. Sometimes it is, but the symptoms are mild and folks will be tempted to come back in person to their jobs. Folks are doing their best. They're masking, they're vaccinated, they're taking that personal responsibility. But what I'm asking of the board and of our district is that we take a systemic approach to ensure that we're not facilitating the spread of this virus by ensuring that we re-agree to our memorandum of agreement, allowing workers to take the time when they are sick to quarantine, return to work healthy and be able to keep our communities safe. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bonilla, and congratulations on the presidentship.
Thanks. Very excited.
We're going to go now to a second reading of the complaint policy. Director Brim Edwards, would you like to introduce this next item?
Yes, thank you, Chair to pass. So we have before us another set of revisions to the district's formal complaint process. While we always try and resolve complaints closest to where they happen, especially if they happen in schools, we do have a formal complaint process that follows state statute. And what's contained in the revisions is a couple important changes. One, that to try and provide more transparency and information to the complainant about the, both about the process and what, what their role is during the complaint process. So they'll have access to a full written record, any materials and information provided to board members before the hearing about the complaint. They'll also receive a written overview of the structure and the format of the, the complaint hearing because often it's one of those one-time, lifetime events that people go through. So just give people a sense of, usually parents, a sense of what's involved. And also that a requirement that the board's final decision will be communicated to the complainant in writing. Again, sort of adding in sort of more transparency, hopefully making it a more accessible and the perception from a complainant that it's, it's fair and transparent and they understand the process. In addition, a important change that's being made is that currently, under the statute, there are different levels of appeals that are, can be allowed and four, five years ago, there was a complaint process that our, the district's complaint process didn't follow actually the, the new state law. So there were changes made and three, three levels put in there. And one of the things that we found from just the last five years, the process is much better, it complies with state law. But that by having three levels, it actually extends the complaint process into sort of a fairly lengthy affair. And so this is, we've now changed this to have just two levels. So taking one level out and hopefully expediting and getting a decision to a family sooner. So again, trying to make the process better, better for families. And so that, that recommendation for the changes came out of the committee unanimously. We've had it, we first read it more than 21 days ago. We didn't have any public comment. And so I would hope that we would have approval of the revisions today and the only thing I would say is, is And the only thing I would say is, it's going to be a change for us going from three levels to two, and so we'll just need to monitor and make sure that it actually has its intended impact, which should be a positive impact for families, which is to have the process not be such an extended process.
I just wanted to add right in there, I think, you know, the one, the biggest impact on the board is it'll double the number of complaint hearings we have. So I think we as a board really need to monitor that and see if that is actually more humane for families or, I think we're trying really hard to make this a better process. I think we need to live into it and then get feedback both from the board, our staff, and our families. But I really appreciate, I know your attempt to hear Director Brem Edwards has been to work with our staff to really try to say, how can we more effectively help families get the tools they need to resolve the issues that come up in the complaint process?
Yeah, you're absolutely right. And I'm hopeful that actually there will be not more coming to the board because that we nail it at the beginning of the process and that it doesn't become a, they get a quicker resolution and then it doesn't actually need to come to the board. It's my ideal, but absolutely agree.
I hope that that's the case, but I think we just need to keep an eye on it. And I, I really appreciate trying to make this better for families. And yeah, so we'll, you know, got to live into it.
Like all policy development, you know, there's what you intend, you know, as a result of your policy, and then there are the unintended consequences. So I hope that we can, you know, have a conversation fairly quickly about what the monitoring looks like and what, what we're going to measure, you know, out in space. What are we going to measure, how are we going to know we're successful or not? And will we have a way to close the feedback loop, you know, with, with the board? So I just, I'm interested in how we're going to monitor it, what we're going to monitor, what we would consider successful, and how are we going to know that, who are we going to hear from? So hopefully there's more to come on that. Thank you for working on this, Director Brem Edwards. This is a, something that just, it was bothersome to me when I first went through a complaint process with the family, that it was so drawn out and it would be maddening to go through the process. And I think that you're, this working through this policy development is a step in the right direction.
So the, the one thing that I'd want to say is that we, I think it's also a recognition is like PPS got much, it's got much better. If I look back, Director Constam's not here, but she was there back when we had a complaint process that didn't really work. And so, you know, I think this is a evolution that shows that we get excellent background work by staff and I think families are being better served. And I don't think the, it seems that the third level is not necessary where it really was at a different point in time. And so, you know, this is a case, I think, of, you know, PPS in a continuous improvement mode and hopefully our families feel that.
Thank you. So do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 6551, Resolution to Adopt Revised Complaint Policy 4.50.030P?
So moved.
Second.
Director Scott moves and Director Lowry seconds. The Resolution to Adopt Revised Complaint Policy 4.50.030P. Is there any additional board discussion? And then I'd like to make sure we hear from our student representative on her thoughts on this topic.
Thank you for the time. I don't have many comments, but I'm excited that we're working towards a better complaint policy for both our students and families.
Excellent. And then Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
The board will now vote on Resolution 6551, Resolution to Adopt Revised Complaint Policy 4.50.030P. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 6551 is approved by a vote of six to zero with Student Representative McMahon voting.
Yes.
Great. We're going to go to the second reading of the Liability Claims Policy. Director Brem Edwards, would you like to introduce this item?
Thank you, Chair DePass. So what we're bringing is a set of revisions to the Liability Claims Policy 8.60.201. It was recommended unanimously out of the Policy Committee. And the, we've had 21 days for public comment. There aren't any additional public comment. I would say that primarily there's language that's not necessary to have in the policy that we're removing. And then the second, probably significant change to this policy, well, there's two other ones, one's not significant, but the most significant one is we're updating the amount of claims that would come and require board approval from 25,000 to 75,000. Again, this is a reflection of changing, changing times. And the other piece is that at the end of each quarter, we'll just get a summary of the settlement claims that were resolved below the board-approved level. But again, this should be sort of a modernization of this policy.
Great. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 6552, Resolution to Adopt the Revised Liability Claims Policy 8.60.021P?
So moved.
Second.
All right, is there any board discussion? Student Representative McMahon, would you like to weigh in on this?
I'm good, thank you.
And Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
The board will now vote on Resolution 6552, Resolution to Adopt Revised Liability Claims Policy 8.60.021P. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 Yes. All those opposed, please indicate by saying no. And are there any abstentions? Resolution 6552 is approved by a vote of six to zero with Student Representative McMahon unofficially voting.
Yes.
Great. We'll now go to the second reading of the School Site Council Policy. Director Brem Edwards, again, would you like to introduce this next item?
Thank you, Chair DePass. Board Policy 7.10.010. This is one of those ones that is, I was just going through the policy manual, I noticed some language that needed to be modernized. It used to be called the Citizens Involvement Process and we've modified that, that language. In addition, there was, this policy included language that, or a whole explanation about local school advisories committees, which used to be a requirement by state law, and also referenced some other community-based committees that have their own charters. So we really reformulated this so that it's solely focused on site councils and the language is language that's reflective, that we would want to use in our, in our policy manual that's welcoming to, and inclusive to all. And this came out of committee unanimously. It's been, was posted for 21 days and we didn't have any significant public comment. So I would hope that we would make these, make these changes and adopt these changes. The one thing I would say is, this is more on the implementation side, but all of our schools are required to have a site council, so just the fidelity of, of implementation. We can, you can have a great policy, but if it's not implemented, it's also state law, then, you know, the policy's not, not worth much. So again, having the support for our schools and our building leaders to be able to run, run the site councils and also to make sure that we're in compliance with state law.
Thank you, Director Brem Edwards. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 6553, Resolution to Adopt Revised School Councils, Revised School Site Council 7.10.010P?
So moved.
Second.
Lowry and Scott, you're, you're both on the ball tonight. Is there any board discussion? Student Representative McMahon, would you like to weigh in on this?
Yeah, I actually think this is a really exciting thing, especially since it kind of brings back to mind the idea of site councils. And I think it's really exciting for families to be involved. PPS definitely has a history of sometimes leaving out the most important parts of our community, which is our parents and our community members. And I think in my time being in DSC and the short period of time I've got to sit as student rep, I definitely see PPS starting to really make that effort to bring both student voices and community voices forward. And so I'm really excited for what this policy will do and also just to remind our community that we want you to have a voice and that you do have a voice. So I'm really excited to see how this will increase that involvement from our families and our community.
Thank you for that. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
So the board will now vote on Resolution 6553, Resolution to Adopt Revised School Site Council 7.10.010P. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All those opposed, please indicate by saying no. And are there any abstentions? Resolution 6553 is approved by a vote of six to zero with Student Representative McMahon unofficially voting.
Yes.
Great. We're going to have a second reading of policy rescissions. Director Brem Edwards, would you like to introduce this next item?
Thank you. This just continues the ongoing practice that we've had of rescinding parts of the policy manual that either, those sections that aren't policies, that no longer reflect current practices or for other reasons, aren't, they may be protocols or they're, they're district practices, but they're not actually policies. So on the, so the Board Policy Committee unanimously recommended that we, I'm sorry, is this the second reading? Sorry.
This, this is the second reading.
And then we have, sorry, I, we're doing so many rescissions.
Right, it's the second reading of the policy rescissions.
Okay.
Deferred Compensation, the district.
Got it. Just to make sure it's in the right one, because then it's like, yeah, we had some other ones too. And in addition, so we have three, four, five, six, seven policies that we're recommending the rescission of. We, they came out of committee unanimously. We didn't have any public comment about rescinding these, so this would further tighten up our policy manual.
Great. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 6554, Resolution to Rescind Board Policies, and I'm going to read them out, 5.10.080P, Deferred Compensation, 5.20.010P, District Employment Practices, 5.30.030P, Education Student Training Programs, 5.50.060P, Leaves of Absence, Voluntary Leaves of Absence, 5.60.070P, Administrative Salaries, 5.70.051P, Leaves of Absence, and finally, 6.10.090P, Private Schools Request for Funding. Is there any board discussion?
I again, just want to thank Liz Large and the legal team, as well as Director Brem Edwards for going through the policy manual. One of the things we're working on is translating policies so families of all different backgrounds can access the information and trying to tighten it up helps make that a more efficient process. So it's, you know, going through the policies with a fine-tooth comb and finding those places where we can improve them has been a Herculean task and it's great to see all this work being done.
Thanks for your comments. And then Student Representative McMahon, I'd love to hear your thoughts if you have any on this topic.
Yeah, I'd just like to second the thanks, that's all.
And Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
So the board will now vote on Resolution 6554, Resolution to Rescind Board Policies. I won't read through them again. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 6554 is approved by a vote of six to zero with Student Representative McMahon voting.
Yes.
Great. I think we are ready to adjourn unless we have any other comments or questions for the good of the order.
I just had something I wanted to say briefly. Over the last week, there was a couple acts of vandalism at our schools and I want to thank the maintenance and facility staff for getting right, right on it. I had people in various neighborhoods or social media reach out to me and really quickly our team was on it. So thanks, you know, those things come in over the weekends and the evenings. So thanks to our staff for keeping our buildings in great shape and it's appreciated.
Thank you. So our, is this date correct? The next regular meeting of the board will be held on August 9?
Yeah.
I'm going to virtually pass a water bottle, it's like a, like the gavel, to Director Scott?
Yes, Andrew's got the gavel in his hand, he's ready.
Excellent. And want to congratulate Director Scott and Hollins again, and looking forward to be, being supportive of your leadership this year. And we are adjourned.